Okay, we are back in session and we are ready for development business and we will move to 8.1.
Item 8.1, Status Report and Further Discussion Regarding the Proposed Replat of Phase 3 of the Grand Prairie Edition.
Okay, Ms. Driscoll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is not a typical type of staff report. This is really a status update and an opportunity for further discussion and direction from you as a governing body. Several things have been happening related to this plat and wanted to just make sure everybody's on the same page about what has happened since then and then get further direction from you on how you'd like to proceed. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about the application, just to remind you what the applicant asked for and how that application has changed and how that application has been acted upon. Grand Prairie Edition is currently 70 platted lots zoned as R1 Single Family Residential. The developer, Bill Shepherd, brought forward a proposal in 2019 to replat the lots to create or accommodate a new housing product that was similar to a villa or patio-style home. These are slightly different than a town home. They're individual homes but typically have an oriented outdoor area. The current platted area, which is considered Phase 3, has 19 lots and they average 100 feet in width. Mr. Shepherd's original application that he brought forward to the Planning Commission included an application to replat the 19 lots to 36 platted lots. In addition, he was proposing a zoning change submitted to create a PDD or Plan Development District. Because of the additional lots, they had a smaller width that wouldn't conform to the existing zoning. After a couple of meetings and further discussion, Mr. Shepherd actually opted to change his application and modify that so that there was no PDD and zoning change required, rather to take the 36 lots and drop them down to 30. So that's a transition from 19 lots as currently platted to 30 lots without the restrictions related to the lot width and still being zoned R1. Additionally, this is of the three phases of this development. Phase 1 and 2 are already partially developed or are in development. Their infrastructure is completely installed, but houses are being built at this time. Part of plating can deal with variations. Variations were applied to this subdivision. One included maximum length of a dead-end cul-de-sac and another a variation of 100 feet tangent lengths between all street curves. Particularly, these were applied in Phase 3 even though other portions had been built out already because Bent Grass Drive, which is basically Phase 3 or the end of Bent Grass Drive, has slight, slight variations from that 100-foot tangent length. Because of that, those variations needed to be asked for again since this was a replat. An additional, the length of that cul-de-sac that was being asked for a variation from is the cul-de-sac at the end of Bent Grass Drive. So it was recommended that those also be addressed. Something worth noting is, as I mentioned, Phase 1 and 2 have their roads installed along with water and sewer. Water and sewer was also addressed in Phase 3 because when road improvements and other systematic improvements were made for infrastructure, that was put in that time to create a loop, which is beneficial to the system. So those have already been installed. So if the developer were to come back, whether he kept the same plat he has right now or some type of alternative plat and asked for specials, it would really only be for road So with that, if the replat was approved as last seen with those 30 building lots, that would take the overall 70 lots currently platted in Grand Prairie and move those to 81 lots with a net increase of 11 lots. Now, taking that to City Commission actions. On December 17th, 2019, the Planning Commission considered and acted on a request to postpone consideration of the replat request and send that to you, the City Commission, to consider enacting a temporary moratorium to address an emergency access road related to the subdivision. As you may remember, at the end of Bent Grass Drive through the municipal golf course is intended to be an emergency access road. That has been intended to be installed while Phase 3 was being constructed, so as those roads went in, the fire access road would go in. There were questions from the community regarding the safety, timing, and the assurity of when that road was going to be installed, and that prompted the Planning Commission to ask the City Commission to consider how that might be addressed. Did it need to be installed now with Phase 2? Did it need to be installed later? Did a development agreement need to be addressed getting down to those specifics? A temporary moratorium was put in place on January 6, 2020 by, or I should say, that motion was considered and finalized on January 27, 2020. A temporary moratorium was put in place for 60 days on future building permits in excess of 35 total building permits in Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Grand Prairie Edition with an expiration date of March 30. What the Commission directed staff to do during that time was to work with the developer to address how that agreement could be made related to the timing of that emergency access road, with the intention that if the plat were to be acted on by the Planning Commission and it to move forward to the City Commission and specials were to be enacted, that development agreement for those specials would be the ideal time to tie in what details could be related to that emergency access road, timing of it, placement, those things. There was a great deal of discussion about the location of the emergency access road. During the plating process with the Planning Commission, the developer did propose a new route, one that was more efficient, faster, and based on public comment. A second moratorium was considered and acted on at the, hold on, sorry, I want to get my, all of my dates right, on June, or March 30, the same day that the last one had expired to continue a 60-day moratorium. And that one expired on June 2. At the May 18, 2020 meeting of the City Commission, you approved a third temporary moratorium establishing the temporary building permits for 35 or more for 45 days. And that was in the anticipation of, based on COVID and having public meetings halted and the ability for the Planning Commission to act, that pushed out that moratorium to July 18, 2020. So, following COVID restrictions on mass gatherings, but still with several restrictions in place, on June 2, 2020, the Planning Commission met to hear three items: two zoning applications, which required public hearings, and one application for replat, and that is the portion of Grand Prairie subdivision as we've been talking about. This meeting was a completely call-in type meeting. The Planning Commissioners were at the dais, staff was available, but we had Slina Media Connection broadcasting and then used the phone bridge, similar to what you also did during much of the COVID shutdown. Following the June 2 meeting, or I should say, during that June 2 meeting, the Planning Commission did act on the application, two items, and that included a 7-0 vote regarding approval of the variations, as I men, sorry, as I mentioned, the length in cul-de-sac and the exception to the 100-foot tangent lengths between curves. Secondly, they adopted a motion 5-2 requesting approval for the plat as proposed by applicant Bill Shepherd. In the week immediately following that meeting, staff was contacted regarding concerns that a Planning Commissioner felt that they were not able to act accordingly and able to hear during the meeting. That prompted staff to reach out to the Chair, discuss with legal counsel that, you know, it's critical that the Planning Commission be able to hear in order to make a decision. And what is the best way to rectify something like that once the decision had been made? So in working through that, the Planning Commission made the decision to basically call a special meeting on June 23. Still dealing with COVID restrictions, we rented out a portion of the Tony's Pizza Event Center to make sure we had significant amount of room and space and also hired professional audio from Audio Innovations to come to make sure there was an extreme amount of clarity and put the question in front of the Planning Commission. First, the question was, "Talk to us about what happened. Talk to us about, you know, are we understanding right and do we, do we need to reconsider this item?" And their answer to that was, "Yes, let's reconsider that." And when they choose to reconsider, it basically takes you to the time right before they acted. It basically removes what they did before and you start again. Our second question to them was, "Do you want to watch the video from last time so that you can take in the public comment that was received, hear that audio?" Because there wasn't an audio problem in what was going out onto the internet and things like that, but there was this question of audio in the room. So, they re-heard that information, watched that video and its completion, and then also had all the material they had previously received on June 2 in that packet, so they had been provided that information, and then also chose to take additional public comment during that meeting on June 23. As a reminder, they had two motions in front of them, one to deal with the variations and then two to act on the plat. And since this was a reconsideration, we'll take those fresh from the top. The motion to accept the variations did fail on a 3-4 vote with the Commissioners citing higher traffic volumes resulting from an increase in lots and a single exit-entry point in Cedar Ridge Drive as their reason for voting against the motion. Without approval of the requested variations, the proposed replat presented by the amended application did not and could not conform to city subdivision regulations. Consequently, all other considerations associated with the amended replat application were moot and no further discussion was necessary or beneficial. The action taken by the Planning Commission does not preclude the applicant from using, I'm sorry, from developing Phase 3 as currently platted or submitting a revised application at a later date. As a matter of law, just to kind of remind everybody what that decision means, the Planning Commission's role in plating is to determine whether the proposed replat conforms to the city subdivision regulations. After they've acted on that and when they send that to the City Commission, your role is to consider the acceptance of any dedications incurred under the approved plat or any conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. An example that we talked about is, conditions that had been added included getting a development agreement, dealing with the emergency access roads, some things like that. Those things would have been acted on by the City Commission. For that reason, the Planning Commission's decision from their June 23 special meeting cannot be appealed to the City Commission. It actually needs to be appealed in district court. That appeal must happen within 30 days from the Planning Commission's decision. So, June 23, 30 days later, actually in this case, is July 23. An appeal petition was served. We, the city, received an attached summons and petition regarding an appeal by the applicant, Bill Shepherd, on July 23, 2020. Those have been attached in your packet. The appeal petition requests that the court, and I'm going to go through theirs, items A through D, just to go through those. It requests, A, that the court set aside the Planning Commission's denial of the variation request by the developers being arbitrary and capricious; that B, find the developers' request for variations met the city's criteria, thereby rendering the decision of the Planning Commission void; C, find that the adopted findings of the city staff support the variations being granted; D, and for an order finding that the replat has been approved by the Planning Commission by a vote of 5-2 and that upon granting the variations, developers' amended replat is granted. The petition does not seek any monetary damages. Nancy Schusler, the city's risk manager, did note that this petition does not trigger defense by the city's insurance coverage and city's legal counsel will undertake defense of this appeal. Part of bringing this back in front of you, besides just bringing you up to date with everything that's happened, is also the issue of moratoriums or moratoria. With the most recent moratorium expired, staff checked before coming to this meeting, we currently have 31 building permits. Your previous moratoriums have had a max of 35 or a limit on 35 before taking action. And I think it's important to point out, and Greg can get into this as you have more questions, but those moratoriums were temporary and they were also consensual between the developer and the city. And so that's, it's a very different situation than if we choose to go forward with a moratorium. And I think that is one of the reasons that staff wanted to come back and have this conversation with you and get some further direction on, is that more of the road you want to go? How do we pursue this further? Staff recognizing the developer had the right to appeal till July 23 compared to the July 18 expiration date of the latest consensual temporary moratorium that only 31 building permits had been issued, staff and legal counsel chose to schedule an update for August 3 so that we could bring you all this information, know what happened following that appeal date before asking for further direction. You'll also notice that we did send a mailing out to the neighborhood, letting them know about this meeting and about the outcome of the last meeting of the Planning Commission to make sure that those who had participated or been following were notified. That's not typical following a plat, but we had set that precedent and had wanted to keep the community or neighborhood aware. I think at this point, as I mentioned, it's really about where you would like to go with this, your concerns, your thoughts. You're now aware of the petition and summons and how, you know, kind of the impact of our previous moratorium and what if we decide to move forward, what that would mean. With that, I rest and I'm happy to take any questions and appreciate your time.
If I could, I think it might be useful to explain if everything just runs its course as it currently sits, what that might look like. So, I obviously don't know what the outcome of the, of a court appeal would be, but if no further action were taken, they, Phases 1 and 2 are approved and they could continue to pull building permits. And then the expectation would be at the commencement of Phase 3, whether that's with special assessments or not, that in addition to the, the street work associated with the phase, the, the emergency access road would have to be installed as well. And so, you know, if you took no action, and I'll defer to Mr. Bankson or Ms. Driscoll to correct me, but if you took no additional action, that's kind of how just the development of the subdivision would play out. Whether the plat is modified would be a function of whether they prevail in court or whether they submit some modified plat, go back through the Planning Commission, try to address the concerns that were expressed, but that, that's a whole process in and of itself that would have to run its course. Otherwise, the expectation would be that they would proceed with the plat as previously approved. I think that...
Yeah, and Mr. Shepherd does own all the lots in Phase 3 and is paying specials on those water and sewer improvements that are there and has been paying that since they were installed. So, I know that question's come up in the past with the Planning Commission of, you know, what is his vested interest or timing or how do we know? I, I don't know the answer to that question, but what I do know is that those lots are still being, having specials paid on them.
The moratorium covered Phases 1 and 2.
1 and 2.
If this issue of the replat had never come up, how, he would still be able to build those 71 lots? Was it 71 between 1 and 2?
He would be able to build...
52.
51, wouldn't it? 70 minus the 19.
Okay.
So there are 70 platted lots in Grand Prairie.
All right.
So if he had kept the plat the way it always has been, when he came in to do Phase 3, we would have said, "Bill, great, exciting for you. When do you put your emergency access road in? When, let's get you set up for specials," all of that.
Right, but my question was going to be, without the moratorium, how many lots did he still have left to build in 1 and 2?
Oh, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, it'd be 51 minus the 31 building permits, so he'd have 20 still available, correct?
Well, I mean...
Because the question comes up, do we want to do another moratorium? He still had 20, still has 20 lots he can build on anyway if there was no moratorium.
Well, I think the number 35 had come about in discussion related to an interpretation of the fire code and when emergency access roads should be installed. And so that number of 35 was kind of saying, "Look, any more than that, one interpretation is that that road needs to go in now." I am not trying to defend either side. I'm just sharing that that is one interpretation of it. The other interpretation is, it doesn't make sense to put the road in until you actually have the other connecting piece, because you can put the road in, but then does the developer need to install the road for Phase 3? And our development subdivision regulations don't say you have to install that piece. So the fire marshal's argument's always been, if you don't have a road to add to Phase 3 and your emergency fire access road is at that end, how does that make sense?
Right, so if it not, if he had not requested the replat, this would have just gone on quietly, he would have built out those 51 lots and...
It would have gone on as it has, as it had been interpreted by that fire marshal.
Right, with, with the fire marshal's blessing, he would, he could have completed 1 and 2.
Correct.
So, yeah, our purpose in extending the moratorium at this point, I think, would require us to change the fire marshal's ruling that that's not a safe route. If we don't change that, then I don't see us having a basis for, it wasn't, it wasn't an issue until late 2019. And wasn't that it should have been is another issue, but it, it wasn't. No one, we weren't out there looking to see if it was safe and, and no one else seemed to be concerned about it until the request for the replat came in.
Well, and I think our current fire marshal, through various comments, has noted that is not against doing the road in Phase 3 either. But the fact that this came to you through the Planning Commission, it's really a neighborhood issue of asking about interpretation and when this road should go in.
Well, I have a strong opinion on that, but it seemed that, in my mind, is separate from how we considered this road before this issue came up.
Yeah, and I would add that, at the time that decision was made, there was review of the code and there was an interpretation that the fire marshal was operating within their discretion. So, they, they weighed in. They may not agree with their application in discretion, or individually, people may not agree with their application in discretion, but that was the premise on which the plats were approved. And to your point, if it weren't for the replat, they'd be finishing out Phases 1 and 2 without question, from the city staff's perspective.
Right.
If I might have a question, if, if Mr. Shepherd, if cornerstone prevails in court and gets the variations reinstated, I guess that's what the court action would do, what is the status of his replat request at that time? Does it need to go back to the Planning Commission with the instruction that the courts have said, "You can't change the variations that you approved once and you have to reconsider the replat," or does it mean that the replat is based on the court action then approved?
The, Ms. Driscoll read A through D, and D of that filing is for the court to order a finding that the replat has been approved by the Planning Commission by a vote of 5 to 2. I can't say that, number one, I certainly can't say what the court will do, but it doesn't mean that they'll do all four of those requests either, but...
But it specifically says, it specifically calls for approval of the replat per the original vote.
That is the request.
Yeah, okay.
Now, that is approving the Planning Commission's 5 to 2 vote. Does that mean it then still comes to the City Commission or does that court decision intervene the City Commission being involved?
No.
Did you try that one?
Well, I'm assuming it has to come to the City Commission because you'd still have to do the acceptance of lands and stuff like the normal process.
To me, the court case is just moving it past the Planning Commission.
Right, it would, I would think it would still come to us for acceptance of the dedications.
But I think part of that, and Mr. Bankson can speak to it more specifically than I, but typically, acceptance of a plat is an administrative item that you're accepting rights of way and easement dedications. You don't typically turn it away on that basis. It's, as Ms. Driscoll described, if there's additional conditions and something unique about it, that you apply some discretion, but...
I'm not sure why we're worried, you know, actually worried about it until we get a court decision anyway.
You know, my, my take on it, and I know Mr. State Attorney is, is fonching at the bit to share his opinion, but I, you know, I have concerns about us doing anything while the case is in the court system. I mean, I just, I just, I just think that's kind of a bad idea.
Mayor and Commissioners, the only point I was going to make, ultimately, this decision is what is referred to, is a question of law. The question before the district court is whether the Planning Commission acted reasonably or not in its action at the special meeting on the 23rd. There is, the law is clear, a presumption that they acted reasonably. It must be shown that they acted unreasonably. If the court would make a determination that they acted reasonably, of course, the matter, the original action stands. The, if they would find that the Planning Commission was unreasonable, what happens then, of course, is subject to the court's discretion and while the case is pending, I don't want to get too carried away trying to predict what the judge might do, but if it's helpful, I would expect that if it was found to be unreasonable, the matter would be remanded to the Planning Commission to respond to the court's direction with regard to the variations and then move on to their full consideration of the plat. They still have more work to do beyond the question of the variations. I think that might have been the point that Mr., that Commissioner Franz was alluding to, that I would expect the court would find, if the Planning Commission were found to have acted unreasonably, there would be direction given with regard to the variations and the matter would then be back before the Planning Commission for consideration of the plat as if they had approved the variations initially and then had gone on to the plat. The, and I'm not sure, I don't know that I'm answering your question, Mayor, but...
That is helpful, that is helpful.
But...
For me.
Yeah, the Planning Commission, in my estimation, has not given full consideration to the plat. We came to, that's the point about, they couldn't really move to the evaluation of the plat with the determination they made with regard to the variations. So, that's what prompts my thought as to what I would expect the court might do. And it's certainly counsel for the applicant's requests in the, in the petition are those, if anything, when you're in that position, you don't want to fail to ask for anything that you might find ultimately in your, in your favor. But I, my best estimate... in your favor. But I, my best estimate of what would transpire is what I just spoke of.
I've got a few questions, and then depending on how far we're going to go down this path, I mean, if the consensus is to just hold, then I'll reserve some of these others. I was wondering if Mr. Bankston could give us any kind of an idea about the timeline of the process. Obviously, the, it was filed on July 23rd. Is there any sense of when it's going to be heard, when a decision will ultimately be rendered? I mean, are we looking at six months? Are we looking at a year? What are we, do you have any sense of what we're looking at?
The initial stage, of course, is the answer period in which the city would file its answer. That is a 35-day window. The case would then go on to what is referred to as discovery. The, that is largely a function of the extent to which the court, well, I should step back. It's a function of the extent to which, in this case, the developer is referred to as the plaintiff, the extent to which the plaintiff developer feels a need to pursue additional discovery in the form presumably of either interrogatories or potentially depositions of those involved in the decision. That is going to be a matter left largely to the court's discretion. It is a question of law. We don't have a jury. The court will be looking to the record of what occurred and making that judgment as to whether it was reasonable or not. So the extent to which any discovery is needed is largely a function of the extent to which the court believes that it needs any additional information that might come from that discovery. Long way of saying, I don't know how long that discovery period would be. I see that as one of the variables in the case. I think once you get that determined, I would expect there'd be a briefing opportunity by both parties. And there is always the asterisk these days with the effect of COVID-19 on the court's scheduling. And I would be, it's something I could certainly pursue a little further with those in our firm that are more directly involved in litigation on a day-to-day basis. But I think for anyone, it's difficult now to predict precisely, given the ramifications of the pandemic on the court's schedule. I would like to think that the process would be more toward your six-month mark rather than the year, but as I've said, there are certainly some variables in that process.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful to know. One of the reasons I was concerned about that is I believe that when we established the moratorium in the first place, the thirty-five number, I don't, that was not an arbitrary designation. So what, and I understand we're in a difficult position of having a developer who won't be a consensual, if we were to pursue that, it wouldn't be consensual, but...
Commissioner Hodges, I just want to be clear. I don't know that, because I have not had that conversation with him.
Right, right, right. I just, I would assume, yeah, and I want to make that clear too. But I guess that kind of leaves me with where, what would the status of the access road be based upon the lawsuit? It's not contingent on the replat, right? I mean, if he reaches the certain threshold, and whether that's like 51 houses, he's going to have to put that in. But I guess my question is, what does the lawsuit do to the status of the access road?
A short answer, I would hope I'm not missing anything. I don't believe it has any impact on the access road at this point in time. That I would understand to be more of a function of, well, the key triggering event at this point in time will still be the...
Fifty-second house.
Well, yes. As soon as Phase, I don't know whether, not knowing Mr. Shepherd's plans as to whether he would exhaust the current inventory in Phase Two before anticipating or considering going forward with Phase Three in its current plating configuration or not. But certainly, we know that any commencement or any development of Phase Three would trigger the construction of the access road.
And we won't issue, we wouldn't issue a building permit until the infrastructure was in the neighborhood. So that means the roads would need to be in, approved, finalized before we start issuing building permits. Upon doing that, that's when that conversation is triggered for the installation of the emergency access road, and wouldn't be allowed, the first building permit for Phase Three would not be issued until all of that is installed, including the emergency access road.
Right. And I think where I'm going with this is, I believe there was a rationale provided for going with the number thirty-five with the fire marshal. But at this point, if, you know, if we're just going to let things ride and let the lawsuit play out, obviously, I think it's probably an extremely low probability that, you know, he's going to pull whatever, like 15 building permits in the next few months. But we've got the thirty-five limit that we went with as a recommendation before. But now, we could potentially be waiting to have fifty, if he were to use up all of his inventory, we'd be getting to 51 houses without an emergency access road, because that's what the original, I mean, he has approval for an existing plat. If he hadn't requested to change that, he would just be proceeding, and I think that point's been made.
Yes.
So...
And so, and I think that gets to what Mr. Skreg was noting, is within code, you have individuals who have the ability to make discretion. One of them is the fire marshal, and the discretion that was applied to this is, yes, thirty, I believe it's thirty is a number that's noted in code, but with discretion of why you may go to a higher number, there's several reasons. And the fire marshal made that decision based on that discretion of a myriad of factors of why to not require the road until the beginning of Phase Three.
Again, I don't know how far to go down my list of questions that I'll end with right now. Where are we at with the inventory of our existing subdivisions and the status of the emergency access roads?
Take that one?
Yeah, we have one. We've pulled it. You guys have gotten a lot of information lately between COVID and everything else, but we have pulled that and are happy to share it with you. I don't know if that's something that you'd rather discuss in a study session, or if you want to take this item back up and discuss it as part of this item. I do think it is part of probably a bigger discussion.
I agree.
Because from looking at the data, this is not the only subdivision. We have several with one way in, one way out, that do not have emergency access roads. And the timing of how we've used emergency access roads on other subdivisions has been similar to what's being proposed here.
Okay. So variations are evaluated, either granted or denied, by the current planning commission. The current planning commission makes their decision based upon the information that they have at hand today. I mean, obviously, they can look at the approvals prior, but the existing planning commission has some degree of autonomy in terms of making new determinations, right?
Yeah, I think so. At one point of clarification, the variances, the variations in question had to be approved to grant approval of Phase Three that's previously been approved, but this current planning commission took that back up. And, you know, I think some of their findings of fact related to the added traffic volume associated with the replat. So that's a long way of agreeing with you.
Okay. The original variations were a 600-foot cul-de-sac to what length? It was really long. It was like, what, 2,600 feet or something, 3,000?
It's significantly over what is in code, and that is Bent Grass Drive.
Okay. And then the variation, you just mentioned the 100-foot tangent.
Yeah, I think it's like 98 or something. It's just so slightly off. In fact, I had to have engineering staff sit down and calculate it, because it's so slight. You would, a lot of times when you see a tangent that's an excessive, you would notice it in a design. This is so slight that you have to really, really verify it. And the only place that those tangents are over that 100 foot is on Bent Grass Drive on that latter part. And that's why staff and legal counsel recommended that these be re-approved with a replat. It's quite uncommon, when you go to do a replat, to redo variations, because a lot of times, if the streets have already been installed, then the variations have already been addressed. But these variations are street-related, and the portion of the street that hasn't been installed yet are the portions that these variations were associated with.
Could you explain, for someone who might be watching TV and myself, what difference the tangent degree makes?
I am not an engineer and will never pretend to be one, but you're basically talking about, it's the excess of the curve. So you don't want a road that's doing this, because it's not good for sightlines, it's not good for traffic flow, it's not good for safety of pedestrians, a variety of things. And these tangents, because of the geography of that longer portion of Phase Three, are just slightly over that amount. And so, or less in one situation, I think. So that's where they need those variations. And that was kind of the findings related to those two variations is due to the geographical constraints of kind of that odd topography out there, and with having the golf course and other uses surrounding it, that it needed that extra...
And that curve would have nothing to do with the ease with which you could bring a fire truck through?
And I was about to ask.
Unless it was extreme.
Yeah.
Yes, but I'm sorry, I want to make myself clear. The answer, why I'm saying no is because our fire marshals verified that that is not an excessive curve that would have any issue. And hence, one of the reasons that through discretion, did not require that emergency access road at that point.
I was about to confirm, if we drove this street, if the tangents are that minor, there's such a minor difference between what's required and what's there, if we drove the road in both of those states, we probably would not notice the difference.
No.
I would guess.
And a lot of times, you can see them right on the site plan. They'll be excessive, but these, like, we really had to calculate down, and they're just slightly off from what the base standard is.
And in some regards, would it be that the variations exist because the city and the original Mariposa developers, they worked a deal out there so that the golf course could fit into the strange topography of this? So I think variances were expected all along throughout this development, is my impression.
Yeah, I guess I can't maybe speak to what kind of a deal originated, but it's not abnormal for variations where you have strange topography. And that can be whether it's geography or kind of constraining uses. And I do know that, just in looking at the history of the plat, that there was some kind of swapping with how holes needed to be laid out and dealing with drainage that did kind of change how these roads were laid out.
Could I ask one more thing? I don't know what's related, but if Mr. Shepherd would choose to use a community improvement district to finance this road, could that be rolled into the special assessments? Is that an item that can be combined with special assessments, or...
So that has to pay for that outside of... No, that's an excellent question, Commissioner Ryan. That was identified in the staff report, that through some staff research, a CID can be used to pay for the emergency access road. Emergency access roads do not qualify in Kansas for special assessment financing. So if the developer needed to financially wrap all that together, and I think that came up, because one of the things that were discussed during the plating process was, when we go to do special assessments, it's essentially a development agreement that you can identify timing of when things need to go in, how they need to go in, and some of those exact features, and that those two financial mechanisms had been identified.
Practically speaking, it would have kind of the net effect of special assessments. It would be an alternate tool to impose benefit costs on Phase Three only. It wouldn't be able to extend to Phases One and Two.
Just one last question. Now, if the appeal is approved by a judge, would, would the, can that decision be then appealed by the Grand Prairie residents, or would it come back to the planning commission? And at that point, there could be an appeal? I'm just trying to figure out how that process would work.
It's my understanding that a decision by the district court, the Saline County District Court, in this case, there is an appeal, an appeal right from any decision by a local district court to the Kansas Court of Appeals. Oftentimes, the court will, it's more difficult to expect the court to address issues of fact. It is more common that on appeal, they would address issues of law. That was one of the reasons I mentioned. The current Kansas cases tell us that, no, I should say, it was the leading case involved a planning commission's review of a plat. In that case, the court identified or determined that the question of reasonableness is a question of law. So I would understand that it is subject to appeal by either party, and that on appeal, it would be a matter of full review by the appellate court, because it is a question of law. If it's a question of law, the court looks at it and can substitute its judgment. If it's a finding, if it's an issue of fact, they'll be deferential to the trial court, because that's where issues of fact are more readily determined. So I believe it could be appealed by either party. Any appeal beyond the Court of Appeals is a matter of the discretion of the Supreme Court as to whether they take a case or not. But this case, I think, would be, or it would be subject to an appeal to the Court of Appeals by either party.
And by either party, you mean either Cornerstone Development or the City of Salina?
Correct, correct.
Gotcha. And so there's a possibility, if, if the property doesn't develop beyond the 51 lots, that that access road might never go in? It'd just be in limbo?
I'm not the fire marshal, but in having conversations that were previously kind of discussed with planning commission, I think it would have to be identified, like, if we didn't see action, I mean, with all of this going on, you know, kind of looking for a duration of what is actively going out. And if Phase Two has been completed and we still see no movement on Phase Three, you know, the fire marshal said as part of that discretion is, if you're not going to complete Phase Three, then we need to have a talk about the timing of that road. But it's always been based on the impression that following Phase Two and completing that, that Phase Three would move forward with the road.
Kind of late to have that conversation after the houses are in, though.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a basis if they just walk away from Phase Three to force emergency access road. As Ms. Driscoll said, they're currently paying the special assessments for modern sewer on Phase Three, but...
But there have been instances in other developments where we have, and I take your point... your point about connecting, right now, there's not a road to connect to, but in other developments, we have required them to put in the temporary access road to provide for that access. And it's something I guess we're probably more likely to do now than we would have been 20 years ago or 30 years ago or whenever this...
Yeah, and I also don't want to speak for the fire marshal, but I think there was discretionary determination made that Phase 1 and Phase 2 were sufficient. I mean, there are some turnarounds, and there's some unique configuration of the street, so I don't, I can't say one way or the other whether they affected that into their decision that the fire marshal at that time would be fine with that if it never went any further, but you kind of have to presume that, given the approval that was granted and the conditions that are in place.
I think one of the different things about Phase 3, and it's, I think it's just something worth considering, is in some subdivisions I've worked with in the past, if you get through Phase 2, there's nothing for Phase 3. It's just, there's nothing there where this Phase 3 has already investment of that water and sewer. So, it does change the developers', I think, investment and intention a bit because you've already sunk quite a bit of money into paying those specials over the long term. So, even if you're not going to develop, I think there is some likelihood that you're going to find somebody else to do it. Not to say, to speak for what they would or wouldn't do, but it's just, it is a little bit different than other developments where you don't have an investment that's already made.
They've already got sunk costs.
Correct.
I have a couple of comments, and I don't think there are questions. So, at this point, I think we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Okay. So, I'll bring it back to the commission. I guess at this point, if there's really no motion on the table or any action to be taken unless someone... No, I don't think, for me, I don't feel compelled to do anything other than learn how to put this down. All right. Let me, to move on even a temporary moratorium, because we're trying to have it both ways. You know, if we think the road's not safe for 51 lots, then we need to go back and invalidate what the fire marshal said before. If we're not going to do that, then whatever the code allows it to go out to safely would think would be our limit, or whatever the agreement was. But we're trying to live on both sides of that fence, and it's just, if we're not going to change what the fire marshal says, then we've agreed in principle to let it go to 51 lots.
You know, my impression is, is when this subdivision was originally platted and accepted, the fire access road was designed to connect to the end of Bent Grass Drive. And to me, that means it was intended to be built when that terminal cul-de-sac on Bent Grass was built. There was no discussion of phasing at that time. Then Mr. Shepherd comes in and he does Phase 1, which doesn't really affect Bent Grass Drive, except maybe incidentally. It's off on the other leg. Then he comes in for Phase 2, and he increases, it goes to 51 lots. And that was approved without changing the requirement for the access road. It seems to me that if we were going to change the requirement for the access road, that would have been the time to do it. To come back now and say, oh, you've got to build an access road that's twice as long and that you're probably going to have to tear out in two years when you do the final phase, to me, just seems to be kind of nonsensical. So, in my view, you know, we approved 51 lots, I hope that's still the right number, in Phase 2 without the access road. And I think that going back and trying to establish moratoriums or change that requirement at this point is a bit, I hate to use the word, arbitrary, because it's already been approved with 51 lots with no access road.
I believe we did the temporary moratorium as just kind of a stopgap deal because there was a lot of concern about different things. I do believe that the Phase 1 and 2 were prior, had been approved by prior Planning Commissions and prior city commissions. I personally believe to not allow us, him, the developer to proceed with all of Phase 1 and 2 is a concern to me that we are harming Mr. Shepherd by not allowing him to do that. And I think there's other ramifications we could run into.
I would concur. I mean, the time to do that was, the approval was Phase 2.
And again, everything that I can remember reading out of all those pages was the emergency access road went in before anything could be developed in Phase 3.
And what is now Phase 3, yes.
So, I think, just continuing on the way we are, and again, if you're concerned about the length of Bent Grass Road and the number of houses, you don't have 51 houses on Bent Grass Road because you have a number of them that go to the northwest instead of the northeast. So, you're probably down to that 35 homes on Bent Grass as you go to the northeast. Again, the, you know, from driving that location numerous times, it's not your typical entrance. You've got an entrance and an exit. You've got, you know, plenty of room there, I think, for fire trucks, ambulances, even if there was something to happen there, so...
Well, you do it at the beginning. I mean, the way I would, only justification I would see as for changing it, if some bad experience proves to us that it's inherently unsafe, then I think we're justified in going back and changing the terms of the agreement. Otherwise, I'd agree with you.
Yeah, I don't...
I mean, we made it an agreement, and it's an honor unless it's proven to be unsafe.
And literally, the only reason we're having this conversation, because obviously, I'm not going to be searching through plats and things, the only reason we're even having this conversation is because of a request to change the plan. And frankly, I only, what I recall from reading earlier, I never saw in the original stuff a Phase 3. It was always Phase 1, Phase 2. So, at some point, we got to Phase 2A and 2B. I can't even call it Phase 3.
Yeah, the original stuff, there was no phasing.
Right.
Except when they did the first part of the development, I'm not going to call it Phase 1 on this other leg of the subdivision, I can't remember the street. At that point, there's some staff documentations referring to that as Phase 1, and then for Phase 2 was kind of everything else, but that was not at the developer's initiative. Staff just used that as a way to distinguish between future assessments for water and sewer as opposed to complete assessments for the full development in what they called Phase 1. So, it was kind of like, this is Phase 1, and this is everything else, and we're going to call that Phase 2, but there was no inherent assumption there that that was all going to be developed as one piece. And it wasn't. You know, the developer came back and did a part of it.
Just one, currently, fire hydrants go as far as the, whatever finished road there is, I'm assuming?
Yes. Those would have been installed as part of completing that road and infrastructure portion for Phase 2.
So, it's just a matter of being able to get the truck, or...
I don't know if they're...
The truck is close as its longest hose, attached to the furthest hydrant. Because functionally, that's, I mean, that's as far as you want to go.
I guess what, I want to be really clear. What is in Phase 2 is what is required by code to have had been installed based on our subdivision regulations and fire code as safe to fully install Phase 2.
So, with that...
I would also point out that Phase 2 does have a cul-de-sac at the end of it. It's not just a dead-end street that you can't turn around on. Matter of fact, I think there are two cul-de-sacs, two turnarounds on that stretch of road. So, it's not like there's a place you can't turn around. They're there.
So, then we need to do nothing.
That's what I'm saying. With that, are we ready to move on to 8.2?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I just, from a staff's point of view, I don't want to be in the position of having this get beyond you and having it come back, and I want to make sure that you're comfortable with. Maybe what I'm hearing is, following maybe the results of what happens in court, to bring those results back to you, to let you know what happens, and, because that could affect several things related to how the applicant handles the plat, if they want to pursue that. It could affect, maybe, if that doesn't go in court as they were hoping, and they, I mean, the applicant, there is the possibility that they can, you know, revise their plat. There are different things. So, I'm wondering if maybe there's a check-in point that you would find reasonable to kind of touch base with you?
I would guess, once we get a rendering from the court. Just when we need to be updated either way.
Does it seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah, just mount a vigorous defense of our Planning Commission's decision and keep us posted as court things transpire. Like, when we do our, when we reply, when there's a determination made whether or not the discovery's going to be allowed, as you would get any updated timelines in terms of important dates, that's what I would like to see. Or if he withdraws his lawsuit or in favor of submitting a different plan, because you indicated that would be a possibility for him to do.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is maybe some of those details could be addressed through, maybe Mike Skreg's kind of updates and things like that to you, an email of maybe what dates and, you know, periods. But I think maybe when everything is said and done, maybe something like this to kind of touch base with you, letting you know if the applicant has made another choice just to keep you in the loop. It would make me more comfortable. I'm going to look at my boss to make sure if that is...
I think, I don't think any action is necessary today, but we'll commit to you that we will, as we hit milestones, we'll report those to you. And when we reach a conclusion, it'll really kind of depend on what the conclusion is. It may run its own course, the developer may reapply, or we may need to provide you an update of, here's where things stand in light of the final conclusion.
Excuse me, if I may, Mayor, Commissioners, along that line, I had spoken with Jake Peterson, one of my partners, who is a litigator, about assisting or taking the lead role in the case. He is prepared an entry of appearance. I asked that he wait until we had this opportunity to speak with you this evening, but he is prepared to file tomorrow that entry of appearance on behalf of the city in defense of the case, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, 8.2.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 20-7857, adopting application fees and charges for the placement of wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right-of-way.
Mr. Andrew.
You, Mayor and Commissioners, last Monday, you approved on second reading Ordinance Number 20-11024. And that ordinance established standards for the construction, maintenance, and modification of small cell facilities in the public right-of-way. Back in 2014, when our current wireless communication for right-of-way installations was adopted, there was also a fee resolution adopted that established fees. And partially because of the complication and not knowing how the applications would come in, we had a fairly elaborate fee schedule, and it required an initial deposit, and then it required that staff keep track of its hourly work on the review time for those installations. As I noted, Ideatech ended up installing about 34 locations in the public right-of-way. As with other aspects of wireless communication facilities, the Kansas Legislature placed limits on our local control, not only dealing with installation, but also dealing with the fees that could be charged. And so, the legislation contained a provision that states that cities may not charge more than $500 for a small cell facility application, that is for co-location, and no more than $2,000 for a new wireless support structure. It also allows for the dismissal of a consolidated application with up to 25 individual locations under a single permit. And then it further requires that cities render a decision on those applications within 60 days. As we discussed, that pretty well precludes having public hearings or doing anything through the zoning process. So, because our fees were zoning-based and based on a zoning process, and because the FCC has also weighed in and provided guidance on what fees are presumed to be reasonable, we have come forward with a recommendation that our current 2014 fee resolution be repealed and be replaced by new fees. That would be a standard $500 for each application. And that would be regardless of whether it's a co-location on an existing support structure or the placement of a new support structure. And so, we feel that those fees are safe and within the confines of what the state legislature has allowed, but we think the previous process of having a $1,000 application deposit and then having billable hours would not be compliant with the statute. So, the goal is to recover our reasonable actual costs in administering the ordinances, and those fees are within the guidelines established by the Kansas Legislature. So, you would have the option of adopting the new fee schedule, adopting that fee schedule with any amendments you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration to a future meeting date and provide staff with direction if you think additional information is needed before you vote, or you could deny the resolution, which would have the effect of leaving the current fees in place, which would conflict with state law. So, our recommendation would be Option 1. And we do have Aaron Martin here with Clark Meislinville, who assisted with reviewing the state legislation and the FCC guidance to make sure our fees were in line. So, with that, I'd be open to any questions, or Mr. Martin's available as well.
Questions? No questions? Public comment?
Don't see any public left, but...
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppeck, I move that we approve Resolution Number 20-7857, adopting the new fee schedule.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7857. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. That will lead us to 8.3.
Item 8.3, Resolution Number 20-7858, authorizing the mayor to execute a small cell master license agreement with U.S. COC, Nebraska-Kansas LLC.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I think you can see a recurring theme here as we start most of our reports by citing action taken by the Kansas Legislature. But in 2019, they adopted it Senate Bill 68, and a result of Senate Bill 68, that prohibited cities from entering into franchise agreements with wireless service providers or wireless infrastructure providers. The state law does allow cities to regulate these providers through other mechanisms such as a master license agreement, which is what we have before you this evening. We did want to point out that back in 2014, the City of Salina did approve a franchise agreement with Ideatech, now doing business as Zayo. They are not a wireless service provider, but they're a wireless infrastructure provider. In other words, they put the infrastructure in, and then they try to lease that infrastructure to service providers. That was done through a franchise agreement, which authorized them to install their wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, also authorized the city to collect franchise fees. But that, the 2019 legislation I cited, now prohibits the city from doing that or collecting franchise fees such as, from providers such as U.S. Cellular. So, we cannot assess or collect franchise fees, but we can assess fixed fees for each small cell facility deployed in the right-of-way. And we've had ongoing discussions, extended discussions with U.S. Cellular. We've had pre-application meetings where we've looked at locations throughout the city, and it appears that they're considering between 20 and 30 locations throughout the city. They're interested in rolling out 5G service and installing a network here in Salina. So, they have requested approval of a small cell master license... So they have requested approval of a small cell master license agreement that would authorize them to use the public right-of-way to install their network. So if you approve this this evening, you'd be allowing them limited access to the city right-of-way to install their facilities, either on existing poles or on new support structures in accordance with the ordinance and regulations that you just passed. And so, the agreement is set up to provide definitions, to provide an agreement term, provisions granting them the use of our right-of-way, authorization for them to install their own poles, compensation to the city for use of our right-of-way, and requirements for relocation, removal of equipment if they cease using them, as well as insurance requirements and indemnification and hold harmless provisions. There's also a supplement agreement that would come into play if they requested permission to install antennas or equipment on municipal facilities. So there are, they're not widespread, but there are locations where the City of Salina owns light poles or poles that serve both to support traffic signals and streetlights. So for example, at the corner of Belmont and Ohio, there's support poles that support both streetlights and traffic signals. Those are owned by the city. If they requested permission to install an antenna there, then the supplement agreement would come into play. So as this is structured, this agreement would run for 10 years, and it would automatically renew for three successive five-year terms unless either party provided notice that they wish to not renew the agreement. And then as far as compensation, the agreement spells out three forms of compensation that the city would receive. If they attach a small cell antenna to a municipal facility, that is a city-owned pole, such as at Belmont and Ohio, as I cited, they have to pay rent to the city in the amount of $270 annually for each attachment. That $270 number is based on the guidance from the Federal Communications Commission is what they deem to be reasonable. And those payments would be made annually for the life of the agreement. If they install a pole or wireless structure of their own in the right-of-way, they would have to pay the city $125 annually for each of those locations, and that would be termed a licensed pole fee. And then if they also have ground equipment associated with that, they would have to pay the city $100 annually for each location as a ground space fee. So instead of franchise fees, the fees charged would be based on the number of locations that they have within the city, and then they would be billed annually for those locations, either as rent, a licensed pole fee, or ground space fee in lieu of a franchise fee, which would be based on their gross receipts. So this master license agreement has been reviewed extensively by city staff, by legal counsel, and by at least two or three legal counsel that I know of, working for U.S. Cellular. So it has been thoroughly vetted, and it meets with the approval of all parties. So option one would be to approve the attached Resolution 7858 and authorize the mayor to execute a small cell master license agreement with U.S. Cellular. You could postpone consideration of the application to a future meeting date to allow staff or the applicant to provide additional information. Or you can decline to approve the agreement and provide further direction to applicant and the staff. But we believe that the agreement that's been put together is the best that can be done, given the constraints and the preemptions that have been exercised by the legislature and by the Federal Communication Commission. So there is a possibility that this would be the first of a couple. I know that we've been working actively with Verizon on the same request. They're not quite as far along, but this small cell master license agreement may be duplicated with additional providers in the future. And again, some of the people I spoke with Verizon were not aware of Ideatech's installations, and were not aware that Verizon was even leasing some of those spots. So I don't know how many of the 34 spots that Ideatech has installed infrastructure in are active, but one of the themes from the state legislature and from the FCC is that they're not forcing cooperation, they're not forcing co-location, they're letting each service provider operate their independent network. So there may be some, what appear to some to be duplication, but that's just a product of the limitations that those entities have placed on local government.
Question, I had maybe a two-part question. One, on the fees, are those locked in for 10 years? And with the automatic renewals, do those stay the same, or is there a negotiation on those new rates?
I will defer that one to Mr. Martin.
Seems like a long time to keep a rate the same, but...
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Aaron Martin, Legal Counsel with Clark Meislinville. So the fees, the recurring fees that we're now talking about in this master license agreement, as Mr. Andrew mentioned, those are highly regulated by both federal and state law, but federal law gives us the best guidance in terms of exact dollar amounts that are acceptable. And specifically, the FCC has given us a safe harbor amount of $270 max for any recurring fee that it will deem reasonable. Anything above that will need to pass muster under a three-part test that the FCC has established. And early on in this process, when we were looking at the city's actual costs and trying to set the fees, we had talked about the concept of an annual inflator. Obviously, that didn't make its way into the agreement. After some discussion with the providers, they took exception with that because it would immediately, every year, keep taking it above the FCC's safe harbor amount, and wanted some justification for each time that was being done. So we did not end up with that. The $270 cap is not an absolute cap. We could go above that if we felt like we could justify it based on the city's actual costs of keeping track of these things in the right-of-way and managing to them. So that's a policy question to consider, but we currently do not have an inflator built-in, and it will be $270 maximum, possibly less, depending on what's being done, for the life of this agreement.
Just seems, I agree, it seems like a long time for...
25 years with those.
Aaron, I hate to throw you a curve, but could it be structured to be $270 or the maximum harbor amount, whichever is greater in any given year?
I believe we could. We could do that, yes.
So if the limit went up, then it could at least go up to the safe harbor amount?
Yes. I think ultimately, whatever the fees are, we just need to be able to justify that that's a reasonable approximation of our fees and costs. The $270 number that we've been referencing is only applicable to when the provider is installing facilities on a city-owned structure. That was deemed to be the most intrusive action, and therefore was assigned the $270 fee. From there, that the fees are scaled down at something less than the full 270 on the basis that it would just simply take less time and resources from staff to keep track of it. I believe it's $125 for a new pole every year, and 100 additionally for any ground-mounted equipment. So 225. But yes, we could build in...
I like the idea if we can do that, because, I mean, obviously, whoever's doing that, we're going to be paying them more, so our expense goes up over a 25-year period to maintain the list and to check this, so. Was that the option, to increase it up to that amount, or it would necessarily go up to that maximum amount?
I think you could build it that it is this dollar amount or the maximum amount from this whole at that time, whichever is greater.
I believe we could accomplish that, and that would be allowed under the state and federal law.
Public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action.
This mayor moved the city commission approve Resolution Number 20-7858, authorizing the mayor to execute a small cell master license agreement with U.S. COC, Nebraska-Kansas LLC, to allow the installation of a small cell telecommunications network in the public right-of-way.
We're going to include the language about the...
With amended language to...
Establish the fee as the specified dollar amount or the maximum permissible? Do you have a term for that? You've called it the safe harbor, but is that what you want to reference in the agreement?
Yes, I don't believe there's a term we have to use, but that the...
The maximum allowable by federal law?
The maximum allowable recurring fee allowed by applicable law.
Got it.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7858 with an amendment to establish the fee to be the maximum amount allowed by law.
Federal law.
By federal law. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay, thank you. That leads us to other business, and I believe there was some individuals that maybe wanted to...
I just have one topic. I would, however we get there, like to instruct staff that anyone joining a citizen board have to either read our public policy, ethics policy, I'm leaving some other part of it out, or when available, take an electronic course, but basic education that's needed for parliamentary process, basically how to conduct a meeting, conflict of interest and ethics, before they sit. I mean, if they don't have the motivation to do that, I'd really question their motivation to sit here and read, you know, 150 to 200 pages of material that'll come for a meeting. Now, each board will have its own special, unique orientation. Now, our community entities is going to orient someone differently from the Planning Commission, from the Heritage Commission, but just for the basic, this is how we run a meeting, and this is what you can do, this is what you can't do. I think to make it easier on staff, we probably have those component parts in written, I'm sure we have our ethics policy in written form, but so you have to read it, and you have to sign the sheet of paper that says you read it.
We can certainly do that and turn that around quickly. Then we can build on that, whether that's a video or some other training format. But admittedly, it's a little complicated, but at least they've read it, and they should know to ask the right questions, or they should know the topics. And I'm calling it an affidavit that they acknowledge that they've been provided it, and they have read it.
And if they have questions, assign someone in the office, who is that question answerer?
Right, right, and on Benzman.
I appreciate that approach. That's something that we can implement quickly, taking it to the next level of interpretation training and meeting every member at their schedule of their choosing is the hard part.
We might have some resources in the Sunflower Coalition who can put the video together for you.
What, in the meantime, I mean, if that's something that's pretty easy to turn around, I mean, I think that it needs to be communicated, at least in my opinion, and that might not be shared, that we're going to have to have those signed affidavits that they have read. I don't care if you make them initial at 10 times on a page. I have read, and I understand this. I have read, and I have understand this. But that they need to have that on file before they can participate in a meeting. Because I think that they need to understand that we do take it seriously. It's a serious matter, and, you know...
And I think at one point, we even discussed having that as part of the expression of interest application, and it was thought that that might deter some people from applying. But, because they may read some stuff in there, and they'll say, oh, no, I can't do this.
Well, that's a good point. I think we could turn that around with one caveat. I don't know what we have on the calendar this week, or, you know, there'd be a little bit of implementation time, but if it's, if the expectation to provide them written documentation and expect them to read it rather than, you know, spoon-vein it?
I think that's a small step we could take that would show some movement, you know. And, you know, I recognize that that may be a problem to get people to come to an orientation session and sit down, and if they miss it, you know, that's a little bit bigger of an issue. But I still think if we can't lead them to water, we're going to have to bring the bucket of water to them and say, this is...
The bar's too high there. You could certainly do that in the first 10 minutes of a meeting, whether they're a new member, or if you're seating a number of new members according to their period of the year.
And I would envision they get, you know, that Monday that we announced that they are on that commission, they get that Tuesday morning, because give them a week or two, because that's, not everybody can sit down and read that in one night, let alone in one meeting, and just, you know, go through it. Because most of them are going to have at least a week before their first meeting anyway, I would think.
Do any of our boards or commissions require financial disclosure, like the ones that we do? Or would that be something that would be worth including as an example for what financial interests are?
I don't know that we facilitate, formally facilitate any of those. We have some that make that disclosure. And Greg, do you want to add to that?
I just thought it might be illustrative for...
To your question, the governing body is the only body, or where each of you are required to make that disclosure, being the elected officials, but it is...
I think that's a little intrusive.
I think just providing, though, the blank form so that people can see what kinds of things can present a conflict. I'm not saying that they need to fill one out, but at least if you've seen it, you're at least starting to go through that mental checklist of, oh, my spouse works for this person, you know, I, you know, I had a $20,000 contract with that particular firm, even though it was only, you know, a contract, and I'm not a regular employee, or what have you. I mean, I just think that it gets people started thinking about what that looks like.
It's not the former, maybe you'll pick up the line.
Right.
You don't need a motion for that, do you?
I appreciate it. I do think that's a good question. We need to talk about it.
Your mic's not on.
I'm sorry. No, don't need a motion. I think I understand where you'd like to go with that. I do have one other item of just general interest when you're ready.
Any other business? If not, I accept a motion for adjournment.
We adjourn.
Got a motion, a second.
Just want to share with you.
Oh, you did, you did have some, okay.
Maybe he didn't.
We're falling right over.
I learned this morning that we had a classic car that got its accelerator stuck on Bob Flaherty Drive, which is the road between Kenwood Cove and Tepex and Ag Hall. They kind of straightened out the curve, jumped the curb, hit a rock, and careened off of the wall of the Tony's Pizza Event Center, narrowly missing the ticket booth on the south side of the building. So, cracked drywall on the inside, scuff marks on the brick on the outside, but it didn't, from the pictures I saw, the brick wall didn't look all that damaged, but we did have a vehicle strike Tony's Pizza Event Center over the weekend. And I thought you might want to know that before you heard it on the street.
Hmm.
He hit the elephant, did he?
Not that I know of. The pictures I saw...
We seem to have had a series of incidents involving motor vehicles there lately.
Wow. Driver was safe?
Yes, I don't think there are any injuries that I... Yes, I don't think there are any injuries that I need to wear of.
Here's to brick walls and seat belts.
Okay. I guess we had a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.[1785.88]